I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, July 6, 2015. It's 7:35. We're here for the meeting of a regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you please to call the roll.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York, absent. Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy, absent. Hanquist.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. On to Agenda Item 3. Receipt of written communications from the public at this time. Is there anyone in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Anybody? We've got a couple of people. Okay, you can both approach. Come on up, sure. Mr. Crumery, you want to hand something to Clerk Spencer?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for receipt of written communications? Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item 4, Public Forum. Public Forum is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask out of respect for the work that we have to get done and also out of respect for other folks who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up to speak during public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have five that signed up, and I'll start with Ken Dietz.
We ask that you approach this microphone over here. Identify yourself on audio so we have it recorded, and address is optional. Thank you.
My name is Ken Dietz. I live on Wrightwood Avenue in the north end of Elmhurst, and I want to address the council about the airplane noise. As you know, back in October of 2013, they put new runways in at O'Hare, and for the first time in 30 years, they weren't going over Elmhurst. And I could finally open my windows, have conversations, listen to the TV. Unfortunately, that was short-lived, because within oh, six months, there was an uproar from the people in Chicago who were getting airplane noise now. The Sun-Times picked up their cause. Almost twice a month, there was articles, you know, about what they were going through, which was the same thing we were going through. Our gerrymandered congressman took up their cause, and supposedly, the runways were supposed to be demolished. And unfortunately, because of all the publicity, right now, it's on hold. And our congressman, you know, he's saying he wants to spread the misery around back into Elmhurst and keep those runways open. As you know, the FAA has had town meetings, and I'm just wondering if anybody from Elmhurst is going there to represent us, because it seems like everything coming out of there is just, you know, from Chicago's point of view and not ours. And that's it.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. I'm trying to figure out what the council's trying to do for the last six months. Wasn't that long ago, a meeting was held, and bidders were put aside for somebody that didn't really meet the qualifications of the bid? And the council said you saved me $100,000. Well, wasn't that too long ago, that you gave $350,000 to the people developing where the old hospital is? You went and bought a garage on York, a gas station. Didn't have the soil test, and I'm going to be paying for that, to have the soil removed. So the $100,000 that's slowed, it was surely disappearing. You promised somebody building condos along Addison that you're going to make sure that he has a profit. In fact, some of the aldermen called up people to see how much profit he should make. So that's going to cost me. Somebody came into this town and said they'd like to build a parking garage. Wouldn't you know it, the city had to get involved. Now I own the parking garage, and I got a bond issue, $16 million. I was told that in 10 years, I'd pay off the old bond issues. Well, that doesn't do me much good, because now I got a new bond issue. If you'd have left it alone, I would at least got property taxes out of that garage. I'm trying to figure out what you guys are trying to do, break me or what? I'm on a treadmill with you guys. My feet are moving, and I'm going nowhere, other than the fact it's costing me more and more for your decisions. And when you tell me you're going to let this recreational guy come in across the tree on Addison, I've reached a point that if I get more than a dollar from him for the property, I will be totally surprised, because in this six-month period, these votes by you have cost me more and more. And it's going to cost me more and more, and the very problems that you have to solve, like this flooding issue, like streets maintenance, like water system that's falling apart, don't even register.
Ms. Pagash, could you wrap up your comments?
So somewhere along the line, you've got to start thinking about the resident. And about, forget about the few, because we can't afford you guys anymore.
Michael Crumery, 570 Resk Crockett.
Michael Crumery, 570 West Crockett. I live in the 2nd Ward, and I would encourage others that are residents that might come to talk about flooding to mention your ward as well, so that you have two or three people listening. Wording in the City of Elmhurst Sidewalk Cafe Permit Application. Sidewalk cafes may not be set up until approval is granted. Tatch diagram of a sidewalk cafe, including a 60-inch pedestrian walkway must be maintained. Pedestrian area cannot encroach on the tree grate. Layout is subject to review and approval. When fence is provided to enclose the sidewalk cafe tables, drilling and bolting into the concrete sidewalk or concrete pavers is strictly prohibited, and that's in capital letters in the application. The city will invoice the responsible party for any damage to the city property. "Any" is also in capital letters in the application. So why is 60 inches, five feet of pedestrian walkway, required to be maintained? Per the ADA, American with Disabilities Act, it's because that is the distance that a wheelchair user needs and is required to maneuver in a complete circle. So of a sample of five sidewalk cafes, how many provided the five feet of pedestrian walkway? Does the mayor or city manager care to take a guess? Yep, zero. Not a single one of the five examples which were provided in the public documents submitted today, and they weren't even close. Three of the cafes provided only four feet of space, four feet or less, and two cafes provided less than three feet of sidewalk space. Provided in the written communication from the public, again, the documents I handed in, is a cafe application that includes a diagram measuring the distance of five feet to the center of the tree, which goes across, encroaches onto the tree grate. Elmhurst residents should expect that the building commissioner and the city manager, placing their signatures on those sidewalk cafe permit applications, would know of the ADA requirements. At a prior city council meeting, an Elmhurst resident talked about receiving a parking ticket at 3:13 a.m. in front of his house and had to pay a $25 fine. Did he receive two, three warnings prior to the $25 fine or the $25 ticket being issued? And again, we all know the answer to that is no. So based on the information provided here tonight, Elmhurst residents should fully expect that the mayor and city manager will issue $25 tickets for the sidewalk cafe violations, else they continue to clearly display their complicit actions.
Paula Wolf. Paula Wolf, 444 North Larch. Number is 630-758-096, if anybody wants to call and ask me some questions. This, why I'm here again, I'd love to see these all over Elmhurst. Maybe somebody would pay attention to us. I was on my way back from Michigan today, and a big fear was, because a storm was predicted, am I going to be able to get to my house? And I don't think I'm the only one who would experience that. But one of the big things is, I've seen different numbers as to when these plans are going to be put into action, is it one year, two years, four years? We shouldn't think of it in years. How many storms are we going to have to go through? When will we truly be able to live in our homes and drive down our streets? The other thing is, after the storm on the 15th, I couldn't get to my house, and I tried driving here, there, and everywhere to get my daughter. My daughter's on the south side. And I've kind of gone through those streets again, looking to see how they did. And it's unfortunate. If people on those streets didn't get water in their houses and didn't have to leave their houses, they think they don't have a problem, and it's not true. And on these streets, I can't tell you, maybe two dozen houses are being put up, and trees, you know, they're blocked off by fencing not to be damaged. Little houses are taken down, huge houses are put up. When are you going to stop approving this building and stop giving out permits? I think the builders are running Elmhurst. They're running rampant, and these houses, in many instances, have already been proven to affect the neighbors. We really need a lot of help. I'm looking forward to the 9th, when everybody has a chance to present or speak, because we've needed that for a long time. And you do listen to us, but you don't answer our questions. Something's issued, well, it's going to happen, or it's not going to happen, or whatever. But it's not like I can go up to Mayor Morley and say, when am I going to get help? It doesn't happen. You just sit there and listen. The other thing I wanted to say is, down in my area, on the north side, I see a lot of new curbs going in. They're lovely, but does it make a lot of sense, when we have sewer problems, to put in new curbs on streets that probably should be excavated in order to put in some decent sewers? So before spending all this money everywhere else, you owe it to the people paying the taxes to get something done. Not a parking garage, not pretty flowers, not new workout centers. And if the streets are flooding, York, Addison, Spring Road, what kind of business is going to want to go in there? Because I know some people on Spring Road have had trouble with the water in their own business. So just questions before you, and I'd really like to see some statements from somebody. Thank you.
Marilyn Areto, 912 Sailor. I'm Marilyn Areto, and I live at 912 Sailor. Today, I have my Garden Walk hat on, because Elmhurst Garden Club, and I'm a member of that, had to announce and welcome all to the 20th Garden Walk this Sunday, July 12th. And piggybacking on what my fellow citizen just got through talking, one of our sponsors is Solutions for Flooding. The company's in Westchester. There's flooding in Elmhurst. There's flooding in Naperville. There's flooding all around, and we citizens have to learn what we could do within our yards, too. We need rain barrels. We need to plant flowers. We need to have dry ditches in our yard, so that water has to go someplace. It cannot all go under the streets. We, as citizens, have to do something, too. And regarding the flowers, we need to plant flowers that the bees are going to like, because without our little friends, we won't have fruits and vegetables. The funds of the walk go for two things. One, scholarships for all Illinois residents that are studying in science. And we have many adults going back to COD and reinventing themselves. Recently, one of our scholars created a design that York students came to us and wanted a garden between the old building and the new building. They wanted a vegetable garden and so on. So she created a beautiful design, submitted it as a grant to the National Gardens Association, and was rejected. But the plans were sent to a company in Addison. You know, these companies that come in one day and put a playground, they're coming August 8th and putting a garden in Elmhurst. They're even giving them boots so that they can grow vegetables in the winter. Cafe Amano says they grow heirloom tomatoes. He'll buy it. So the walk has many features. There's seven gardens, and the homeowners volunteer their time. He's not here tonight, but Alderman York has offered his garden, and it'll be on the 2016 walk. There's a fair in Wilder Park with about 50 vendors. A lot of them have plants and other garden items. There'll be the University of Illinois Extension will help you with any of your problems. The Park District cosponsors the walk with us, and the mansion will have a light lunch in there, and our scholars telling you what they're doing. The Garden Walk does showcase Elmhurst. It's a venue where, you know, you could drive through the neighborhoods. And I always say that New York City has Central Park, Chicago has Grant Park, and we have Wilder Park, which is a beautiful, beautiful area that we all enjoy. Our walk would not be possible without the generous sponsors. So many businesses in Elmhurst help us. So many people volunteer and donate to our endeavors. Some sitting right here on the council have been supporting us for years. So mark your calendar for this Sunday, July 12th. Put your sun hat on, invite your family, your friends, your neighbors, and out-of-town to enjoy the day in Elmhurst. Thank you.
Okay. Clerk Spencer?
That concludes those that signed in tonight.
Okay, that concludes public forum for those who signed in. Is there anybody who do not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet that wishes to address the council? So please raise your hand. We have two, three. Okay, we'll go left or right. The lady with the sunglasses on her head, we'll start with you. Please approach the microphone, state your name.
Hi there. My name is Maria Kresnikah. I'm at 239 Elm. You've seen me here before. Today, I have a visual aid. Hopefully, you'll be seeing lots of these signs around town. If anyone's interested, go to the Facebook page called Elmhurst Flooding. Many of you, well, a couple of you, since I live in the 1st Ward, you all have done it as aldermen and as mayor, knocking on doors, asking people to put up signs. This is an important sign, because I guess public humiliation is the only way to get things done. But it is embarrassing to have this sign up. It's embarrassing to have this, because we pay thousands and thousands of dollars in property tax, and to pay all that money to live in this town and to have your home, your yard repeatedly flood is embarrassing, and it shouldn't happen. And I know there are lots of things that need to happen in this town for economic development, and it's important, but you have to remember that this town, if it's a car, the residents are the engine, and you need to put money and resources into us. And what you're putting money and resources in to are the wheels, and you can't make a car go by putting the money and resources into the wheels.
Okay, we had the lady in the white shirt, I believe.
Patty Ilg, Alexander Boulevard. I've been up here numerous times over the last 13 years. I now have one of these signs in my yard next door to new construction and sandbags. So when people are touring this new construction, this is the very first thing they see. I have to ask every one of you, when you guys go on vacation, do you make provisions with neighbors and family, friends, and ask them, can you keep an eye on my house while you're gone? Do any of you guys do that when you go on vacation? I had to. I was gone for two weeks. I constantly checked the weather back home and texted my friends, my families, my neighbors, asking them, can you go check my house, make sure it's not flooding? I can't do it anymore, I'm sorry. So I beg you again, numerous times, please. I cannot take away the hours, the money, the time that we waste up here time and time again, and nothing gets done. And honestly, this vacation was, I kept checking Facebook, the Elmhurst Flooding page, to see what was going on back home. How is that getting a break from what's going on in my own misery nightmare that I live day in and day out worrying about flooding when I'm supposed to be on vacation with my family? So I beg you, please. We need some answers, and I'm looking forward to getting some on Thursday. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner, did you have your hand up? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was you. No, no, that's okay. Just blame it on my eyesight.
Keely Miller Whitzel, 277 Berkeley. I, too, have been suffering from flooding for many, many years, and most of my problems are due to the academic wing of York High School. And we have spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars over 21 years trying to keep water out of our basement. And when the academic wing was constructed in 2000, and the recent rains, there's nothing we can do. We're downhill. All the promises made during that project, the water retention pond next to our house, was eliminated. The million dollars that the city fined the school district has never been paid. It's just cheaper to use the Whitzel yard and basement. Every issue, every flooding issue, every neighborhood has a different problem. I was just talking to some neighbors earlier on a block north of me on Berkeley, and they had sewage this last time. You know, every flood affects everybody a little bit different, but it's throughout town. Solutions have to be made, and part of it is keeping adjacent neighbors from flooding property. There's no way water runoff from a huge institution should be allowed to go downhill and affect other people, or other new construction to existing neighbors. Something really needs to be addressed, and it has to happen. I've suggested, made many suggestions to the school district about a few things that would help me personally, you know, and it just gets pushed aside. Thank you for listening.
Okay, anyone else who do not have an opportunity to sign in and wishes to address the council this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. I'm sorry, did I miss someone? Oh, sure. Man in the back in the blue shirt.
Hello, my name is Chris Farrell. I live at 138 North Avon Road, 5th Ward. I've only been a resident for a little over 12 months now, but have experienced two devastating floods already, and a couple others where, you know, water has encroached the house but not penetrated. I also own a business on Larch in the business district there, and we've had issues with our business being flooded, the water mains rupturing in the park. So I've been associated with the area for about eight years and experienced water in many different ways. I share, I feel for the people who've experienced it for a lot longer than we have. We've only been here, like I said, 12 months, and we're already debating what we can do. We've spent thousands of dollars trying to fortify the residents, and with the overland flooding that we experienced there on Avon, being an island in the middle of a river during these rains, it's nearly impossible to keep it out. So I beg council members to work with school board, the park board, engineers, everybody who's involved, to try to get things done as quickly as possible, because as you see, when you watch the weather reports throughout the country on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, these problems aren't going away. They're only going to get worse, and if we don't do something in the near future to help eradicate and alleviate some of these issues, you're going to have more and more residents with issues, and the towns are going to get more and more of a black eye. Businesses aren't going to want to be here, and I look forward to seeing everybody Thursday and hopefully hearing from members of the council and the two respective boards. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. That concludes our public forum portion of the meeting. On to announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to announce that there is a meeting this Thursday, July 9th, regarding the Webster Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project. This is a project that can benefit residents that live on Webster Avenue. It utilizes the southeast corner of Fair and St. Charles Road to provide overland flood relief for that neighborhood. This open house is to answer questions that the residents or anyone who's interested in the project may have. The process, the point in the process that we're at is partway through the design work, so this is a great opportunity for residents to give their input, to call to the city's attention and the engineering firm's attention, anything that they may not have come across through all of the geotechnical and survey work that has been done to date, and to participate in the process. So that is this Thursday, July 9th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and it's here at City Hall. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? I'll add to that. That was one of my announcements I was going to make earlier, or later in the mayor's report, but to wrap it up, this is at the corner of, really, St. Charles, where it goes into Berkeley over the cloverleaf. So it's the southeast corner, and this is land that's actually owned by IDOT, and we have permission to move forward. So this is the next phase, where we'll go into engineering and we'll get resident input. But we're moving forward with that, and that should hold about 3.5 acres of, acre-feet of water, so that's a good thing. Any other announcements? Alderman Graham.
I guess I'll request if you or the city manager can make the announcement about Thursday's meeting, the communication meeting.
Yeah, I'll announce that under my report. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. At this time, is there any items on the consent agenda? Any alderman wishes to provide comment or vote no, and wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as published with no, nothing removed. Motion by Alderman Healy, second by Alderman Palmsky. Clerk Spencer.
Healy.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent.
Toledo.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy, absent.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. On to reports and recommendations. 7.1, Mayor Morley. Yes, July 9th. I'm happy to say that I've been in contact with Parks and Schools via email and text, and sent them a proposed agenda last week. I know we heard back from the Park District, not sure if we heard back from the schools, but no changes to the draft agenda that I sent to them. So that agenda was posted on our website late this afternoon, late this evening, around 5:30 or so. So you should be able to find that for Thursday, July 9th. The meeting will be held in this room at 7 o'clock. There is also the Webster Avenue Flood Mitigation. I think that's 4:00 to 6:00. And then Zoning and Planning Commission also has a meeting around the same time, but that'll be held in Conference Room 2. So like I said, agenda will be posted, and this is an ad hoc committee with technically no legislative authority, but we're going to run it like a regular meeting, and there will be public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So I encourage everyone to come on out. There will be representatives from the Parks, the schools, and the city, and we'll go over the status of everything, where we are. And I think it's going to be a long meeting, but I think it's going to be a productive meeting. Webster Avenue Stormwater, we already did that. Han Street's underway. So like I said, agenda will be posted, and this is an ad hoc committee with technically no legislative authority, but we're going to run it like a regular meeting, and there will be public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So I encourage everyone to come on out. There will be representatives from the parks, the schools, and the city. And we'll go over the status of everything, where we are. And I think it's going to be a long meeting, but I think it's going to be a productive meeting. Webster Avenue Stormwater, we already did that. Han Street's underway, just on the block. Folks have noticed it's actually fenced off, and there's been some serious demolition. I know that there was a building gone today that was there the day before. Is there one building left, I believe?
Last I saw, one.
Last I saw, one building left. So that project's well underway. And then the last item I want to announce is the Elmhurst Cycling Classic. It's our third annual Elmhurst Cycling Classic. It's the 24th. It pretty much runs all day. It's got six or eight different races. It's a great event for the city to host. In addition, I believe that's the very first day that the trolley's going to run. And the Elmhurst Cycling Classic, and you can get there at elmhurstcyclingclassic.com to get all the information. That starts and ends at the Wilder Mansion, same route as the last two years. I encourage everyone to go out there. And then I believe the trolley will actually be picking people up on the opposite side of the park, kind of the opposite of the Lizardo Museum. And that's it for me. City Manager Grabowski?
Thank you, I have a few items. Two of them are road closures that are happening tomorrow. The, just for information, the intersection at Van Buren and Mitchell will be closed to repair a manhole in that area. That should be a one day, possibly two for that. The second, more significant, is West Avenue is going to be closed between Elm Park and St. Charles, and that's being closed by the railroad. CN is coming in and replacing that track. It'll be closed July 13th through the 18th. They are going to put up signs for road closures as they're required to, and also detour signs. The detour will be down Elm Park, down Hagens, and St. Charles. So FYI, we notify the Park District as well, obviously with the courts right there, and we'll be notifying the businesses in the area, too. Last item I have, and we just became aware of this today, we received a letter from Cook County Department of Homeland Security. And FEMA is announcing some flood mitigation assistance program and pre-disaster mitigation program. And apparently have multimillion dollars of funding which we'll be applying for. So one of the programs has 150 million, and another one has 30 million in dollars available. So we're checking with DuPage County, as well as Cook County, to see what will be eligible for, and just let the council know we'll be applying for those as appropriate. That's what I have.
Okay, any other reports? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few questions if yourself or the city manager can speak to them, I would appreciate it. One of my residents spoke about O'Hare noise. I've asked the question on many occasions. If we could, if I could make the friendly request of announcing ahead of time these FAA town meetings to all the elected officials, as well as to the public. And if one of you can speak to the fact of where things are with O'Hare noise, with the runways that was spoken about, the diagonal runways, what the status is as of today, and what is Elmhurst's position going forward?
Do you want to ask all your questions?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. You mentioned Han Street development. I was asked a question on the way here this evening of concerns of control over asbestos as these buildings are torn down, even though most, other than one, has already been torn down. If someone can speak to the control of asbestos, as well as all the various other remediation, the gas, oil, from the gas tanks, the dry cleaners, et cetera. So that's question two. Question, or I guess maybe a request, is number three. A resident spoke tonight about sidewalk cafes, and some of the sidewalk cafes not meeting our code. If city staff can please look at that this week to make sure that is not the case. I would hate to see any incidences arise from a non-compliant sidewalk cafe. And then the fourth and final is, I'm made aware of Stevens' property, Stevens', the former Stevens Steakhouse property on North York Road. If someone can speak to if there is a timeline, or what the proposal is for that property, because it's of great interest to the third, and I believe as well as the second ward.
Okay, so I've got three questions and a request. So sidewalk cafe staff will check on that. Stevens Steakhouse, yeah, pleased to announce that, in fact, it was at our commercial real estate forum that we held at Lizardo, what day was that? A week ago, Thursday? The representative for Thornton's was there, and they do have an agreement. I don't know if it's been signed yet, but they have an agreement in principle that they're going to sell that property. There is some zoning stuff that they will have to go through, the normal process, go to zoning and planning. But it sounds to me like it's a done deal, and that property's probably been vacant and empty for, I'm going to say, 20 years, maybe 15 years. So, anyway, Han Street demo in O'Hare. You can handle Han Street?
Yes, all asbestos was abated before the demolition. Apparently there was very little in there, but it was properly abated. They follow all IEPA rules with regard to that, and any oil removal and tank removal as well. We have, the developer has an environmental consultant that's working. On his behalf, we have employed an environmental consultant for the city as well, to make sure that things are done properly.
Thank you.
And regarding O'Hare, we have been very involved with the Suburban O'Hare Commission, or SOC. And it's been interesting, because there's a lot in play right now, even down in Springfield. There are a number of bills that are being debated regarding a number of runways, which ones will stay, which ones will go. If you recall, the runways that were to be demolished are the ones that point to the northwest, so towards the Arlington Heights and Mount Prospect. The last version of the legislation that I saw was mandating that they keep those, which of course would then, if they're used, and that's all governed by the FAA, if those are used, that would obviously divert traffic away from Elmhurst. So that bill, we think, is a benefit to the city. We continue to work with SOC, and there's a new group on the east side of the airport with the acronym of FAIR, F-A-I-R, Fair Allocation of Runways. They have been very active, and so SOC has met with FAIR to essentially join forces and work together to make sure that the allocation is using all runways, particularly the east-west configuration, which is what Chicago went to the state with a number of years ago.
Follow-up, Alderman Bram?
In regards to that, I'm concerned of, and I'm not saying that this is the city of Elmhurst's position, but I'm concerned to hear that we are working with to make sure there is a fair allocation of use of runways. Part of the reason why we stepped down our position years ago in regards to SOC, in regards to battling the city of Chicago over this issue, was due to the fact that it was going to be east-west running runways, and therefore lessen, if not totally eliminate, the impact to Elmhurst, specifically more northeast, northwest Elmhurst, from a greater perspective. I would like to make a request to have the city publicize ahead of time on the city website, board docs, wherever, when these public meetings are coming up, as well as at least communicate to the elected officials on when some of these SOC and FAIR meetings are upcoming as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to other business. Any other business? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Levin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned, thank you.